Town Hall meeting for the Bel Air Board of Town Commissioners for December 16th is now in session. It is 7:02 PM. We're just a little bit behind schedule. I'm going to call the roll. Commissioner Rutledge?
Here.
Commissioner Chismar?
Here.
Commissioner Taylor?
Here.
And Commissioner Chance?
Here.
All right. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First on our list is the approval of the agenda. May I have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to move that the agenda for this evening be approved. The agenda for December the 16th, 2024 at 7 o'clock at the Bel Air Town Hall.
Thank you, Commissioner Chance. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. Any discussion of the agenda? All right. In that case, Mr. Krantz?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a vote for the approval of this evening's agenda, December 16th, 2024. Commissioner Rutledge?
Aye.
Commissioner Chismar?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Chance?
Aye.
And Chair Edding?
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Thank you.
Next up is the approval of the minutes. May I have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meetings held on November 26th, 2024, and December 2nd, 2024 be approved as submitted.
Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any discussion of the minutes? Corrections? All right, Mr. Krantz?
Good. Good to go.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is for the vote on the Bel Air Board of Town Commissioners meeting minutes for November 26th and December 2nd. Commissioner Rutledge?
Aye.
Commissioner Chismar?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Chance?
Aye.
And Chair Edding?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we get to the heart of our meeting this evening, the presentations. And first, we're going to start with the Bel Air Police Department promotion of Holly McCracken to Officer First Class. All right. And is this on, Mr. Krantz? Should be? There you go. It's on now. Okay, it was off for a minute. Officer McCracken. Officer First Class Holly McCracken graduated from the Baltimore County Police Academy in August of 2023. During her brief time at the Bel Air Police Department, Officer McCracken has established herself as a hardworking and dedicated police officer, particularly in the area of traffic safety. Officer McCracken has attended the Maryland DUI College and received additional training in standardized field sobriety testing and radar and lidar certification. She currently leads the Bel Air Police Department in traffic stops with 623 and has made 31 criminal arrests. And that is in just over a year, so congratulations. That's impressive. Officer McCracken's work ethic and dedication is unsurpassed, and she often picks up additional shifts and volunteers to work many overtime details. Despite the demanding schedule of a police officer, Officer McCracken is also pursuing a degree in Criminal Justice Legal Studies at Hartford Community College and also teaches a women's self-defense class there as well. Holly is joined here tonight by her father, Bill, and her stepfather, Larry. All right. We congratulate her on her promotion to Officer First Class, and we look forward to what the future holds for this promising young officer. So let me just congratulate you. That's very impressive. You have the official certificate as well as a little something. Oops, sorry. This one's yours. There you go. All right. And they did this to confuse me. They put them in the wrong folders, but I'll take the fall for that. At any rate, congratulations, and you certainly started off with a terrific first year here, and we're very happy to have you onboard.
Thank you, ma'am.
So I'm Chief of Police Charles Moore. I'm her boss, and I work beside her, proud to say. And the mayor said something about the Baltimore County Police Department, so what we'll do, we team up with other police agencies to use their academies, because, you know, we're small but mighty, but we just don't have our own academy yet. So we've got to thank Baltimore County Police Department for creating an exceptional policewoman. The first time that I remember hearing about Ms. McCracken, she was a loss prevention officer, I believe, is at Target? Target? And I would read the reports, and I was like, my gosh, this young lady's pretty aggressive security officer. We might have to try to recruit her. And your sponsors out there, some of the officers in the audience, they listen, always listen, and they found you, and they recruited you, and we're fortunate enough to have you here today. So you pushed yourself. I know when you went to that academy, you pushed yourself hard. You made it through. You're very quiet. Maybe you were a little timid at first. You were studying, and I noticed you were studying, and you did what the other officers gave you advice to, just watch. Watch. Look for your mentors, look for your examples, and follow those. And by gosh, you did that. You are pushing forward. You're very confident. And you just keep moving forward. You keep evolving and taking the next step. I hear you on the radio, and you're an exceptional policewoman. And I tell you, you've almost hit that point that all of us cops like to hit, when they call us well-rounded. You're articulate. You're incredibly aggressive. Goes out and writes, you know, keeps the town safe. And I'm really, really proud of what you've become. And also, you're continuing, and I'm ordering you, you have to finish your degree, okay? You have to finish. You get praise from the college professors, the Criminal Justice College professors at Hartford Community. You're teaching a class, and they can't say more nice things about you. And what is it? Where are you? It's cum laude, I guess? What have you earned? What significant recognition have you earned?
I am on the Honor-- I'm in the Honor Society, in the Honors Program, as well as on the Dean's List.
So you need to finish. So I want to congratulate you, okay? I'm very proud of you, okay? All right?
I think you should sit up here. We should have the other commissioners come down, so we can all celebrate your promotion.
Family? Want to do a family photo? Hey, Dave, do you want to do a family photo?
That happens. That's happening.
All right. Congratulations again. I don't know how the chief manages to do it, but he has really a terrific police department that he's managed to recruit. Our next presentation this evening will be the Bel Air Police Department appreciation of Corporal Kayla Hendren. Would you come up, please? Join me at the podium. Congratulations to you. So Corporal Kayla Hendren began her police career with the Baltimore City Police Department in 2004, where she served as a patrol officer in the Northeastern District, where I used to live, until taking a position with the Bel Air Police Department in August of 2007. However, on November the 20th, 2013, Corporal Hendren was hit by a car while directing traffic around an apartment fire. And after four surgeries and countless hours of physical therapy, she returned to full duty in August of 2016. In recognition of her efforts, Corporal Hendren was named the VFW Officer of the Year in 2017. And upon return to full duty, Corporal Hendren distinguished herself as an excellent investigator. Her efforts brought convictions in numerous complex cases, some of which have spanned multiple jurisdictions. On January the 25th, 2019, Corporal Hendren was promoted to Corporal, becoming the first woman in the history of the Bel Air Police Department to achieve that rank. As a corporal in patrol, she continued to take on and solve several complex cases, as well as mentor officers under her supervision. In August of 2021, Corporal Hendren was transferred to the Administrative Section, where she oversaw dispatch, as well as the Records Division of the Agency. During this assignment to current date, Corporal Hendren spearheaded the Bel Air Police Department's transition from the FBI's Uniform Crime Report to the National Incident-Based Reporting System, ensuring 100% compliance in the statistical reporting of crime. Due to injuries sustained on the job, Corporal Hendren officially resigned as a police officer in July of this year and accepted a position in dispatch as a police communications operator, where she continues to make a difference on a daily basis. Corporal Hendren is a forward-thinking and proactive police communications operator who utilizes her police experience to enhance police operations, ensuring the safety of her colleagues. The town of Bel Air thanks Kayla for her dedication and commitment to duty to the Bel Air Police Department and the citizens of Bel Air. Her many sacrifices made throughout her years of service have not gone unnoticed. Those sacrifices will continue in a different capacity, and we are grateful and extremely fortunate to have her legacy continue as a dispatcher. Kayla, we salute you and thank you for dedicating your life to your community and the police profession. So we're glad we said goodbye in one capacity and hello again in another, so glad to still have you. I'm going to cede the mic to the chief again.
So Kayla, Corporal Hendren, I know, we all know here that you've experienced some challenges, to say the least. The most extreme of which was probably the loss of Ezra, and I'm sure he's probably looking down and very proud of you right now. Followed up by, you know, the results of what happened in the injury in 2013. You had a valiant journey to try to get it back patrol. I know you tried your hardest. But, you know, things are what they are, and I think, you know, sometimes you have those challenges, but, you know, look where we are now. We're getting the best of both worlds from what you're doing with us. You confronted those challenges, and you never surrendered. I do know that we're incredibly fortunate to have you, to benefit from your transition to being a civilian dispatcher. And I know for a fact, your confidence, your experience-oriented voice, and it brings calmness and stability to the officers out on patrol. I know that. I talk to them. And I know, I know your heart's on patrol, and so is mine. And, you know, I'm pretty much a desk jockey too, and I live vicariously through what they do out there in patrol. And I know, I hear that in your voice. You're feeling that too. And I think that, I think you're liking it. And again, we're incredibly fortunate to have the best of both worlds, what you did in patrol, and what you're still contributing to the citizens in the town of Bel Air. We're very lucky to have you. And congratulations to you, okay? All right? And I salute you, all right? Here, Kayla. Kayla.
Do you get a gift certificate? And this is your proclamation, and we will have pictures, of course.
Sorry.
It's mandatory. The next presentation will be by the Greater Bel Air Community Foundation, awarding the Brummel Award to Phil Robb. So I will cede the podium.
Well, this evening is a special recognition as part of the Tom Brummel Award. And some of you may note, have known Tom, and some of you may not. So I'm going to read some, a little bit about Mr. Brummel and why the Greater Bel Air Community Foundation, of which I was chair until a couple of weeks ago. We have a new chair, which is Sarah Klein, who couldn't be here this evening. But I want to tell you a little bit about the Tom Brummel Award. It's given annually to a member of the Hartford County community who exemplifies the life and legacy of Tom. Tom was, at one time, the Bel Air Chief of Police, a Bel Air Town Commissioner, and Vice Chairman of the Planning Board. He was a member of the Greater Bel Air Community Foundation. He was the Chief Deputy of the Hartford County Sheriff's Department. He was a state fire marshal and a veteran in the US Army. So he was a pretty awesome guy. So as a result of that, and recognizing his service and dedication to Hartford County, the Greater Bel Air Community Foundation found it fitting to recognize individuals in our community who have been really wonderful contributors to this community and examples of what we all strive to be. In past years, the Greater Bel Air Community Foundation recognized Clarence Boyle, Joseph Snee, Stephen Linkus, Andrew Klein, Melinda Velez, Lyle Sheldon. You may remember not too long ago that we recognized last year Peg Lucas, who is also here this evening. And this evening, it is an honor for us to recognize a gentleman named Phil Robb. So I'm going to invite Mr. Robert Cahoe to come forward and talk a little bit about Mr. Robb.
Thank you, Commissioner Chance. My writing commissioners, good evening. It's my honor to be here this evening to introduce Phil Robb. I've known Phil Robb, I guess, our whole lives, Phil, one way or another. Phil is, I believe, a native of Bel Air, has lived in Howard Park, I think, your whole life. So for those land use aficionados of us who are here this evening, Kevin, Howard Park, I believe, is the first subdivision in Hartford County. Built in 1950s or so. Phil's still there. Phil exemplifies, as Mary indicated, the volunteerism and leadership in the town. I can't think of anybody who is more deserving of this. Phil has always been there, maybe sort of in the background, but always been there. He is, was a longtime employee at Hartford Mutual. He was, is a member of the Alseski Foundation, was a founding member, Phil? I guessed that, but I assume that to be correct. The Alseski Foundation's been in existence for over 30 years. I see Phil more often in front of the Planning Commission. Phil has been a member of the Planning Commission for, on and off, for 30 years. 30 years. That in and of itself is hard to believe. And as such, he's had a lot to do with the development of the town and has, is always an extremely active and involved member of the Planning Commission. He's an active member of the Lions Club, and of course, Lions Club is a huge supporter of the town. Phil, would you come on, come up here, please? Come on down. So Phil, I'm sure I've left out a lot, but I'm very happy to be here. We're all happy to be here tonight to make this award to you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I couldn't be more honored and humbled. It's especially meaningful to me because Tom Brummel was a very close friend of mine. And when I served on your board, we named him Police Chief at that time. And I served as his Police Commissioner for several years, most of the time that I was still on the board. One thing that was near and dear to Tom's heart that fell outside of this, that along with bleeding Bel Air colors, blue and white, he led that Maryland, University of Maryland, red and white as well. He had played football for Maryland. And we had some really great trips, groups of us, to the home games and even down to the Orange Bowl to see Maryland play down there along the way. And so he's very connected to me, and we became very, very close friends after his appointment here as chief. I remember working through his budget request a number of times at my kitchen table. I said, "Tom, we'll do our work here, and then I'll get it through the rest of the board together with you." And we did. I want to thank, got to see some fellow Lions, fellow Planning Commissioner, former commissioners here. My swim coach is here even. I just got into lap swimming this winter, and Jason is one of my guides for that in the early morning. So thank you so much. Very meaningful honor. I'm very, very pleased and grateful. And I recognize all the service that you all have put forward at all times. So thank you so much.
I'm going to invite Jason Gazor and Bob Cahoe and Eddie Hopkins, who is also a member of the Greater Bel Air Community Foundation, for this presentation. So Phil's name will be on this plaque, and you will, next time you come into Town Hall, it will be hanging on the wall. So we'll do this again and again and again, because there's always wonderful people in this town that we can recognize. So congratulations again, Phil.
Madam Chair, if I may. Phil, I just, Phil, Mr. Rob, Phil?
I'd just like to congratulate you. Well-earned award. You've done a lot for the community. You've worked very hard, and I could think of no one more deserving than this award today.
All right. Our next group of presentations will be the Town of Bel Air 150th Anniversary Time Capsule Sealing Ceremony and Recognitions. So I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening and thank everyone who was so very helpful in celebrating our 150th anniversary. Thank you to every member of the Bel Air 150 Committee. I know it is a really heavy lift to get this kind of a thing off the ground. I want to make a special thank you to Julia Potler, who I know did quite a bit of the heavy lifting. I got emails, notices, lists, time schedules, reminders from Julia--
of the heavy lifting. I got emails, notices, lists, time schedules, reminders from Julia. So she was on this all year long and I'm sure that she is very grateful that the year is coming to an end. I'm not sure you'll be here in 50 years to do the next one, but you can never tell. You know, you might want to stay. So we've been celebrating a key moment in Bel Air's history throughout 2024, which is its incorporation as an independent municipality in 1874. And it's really an honor to be here as the Chair of the Board of Town Commissioners, as all of us celebrate the milestone anniversary in our town's history and seal the time capsule for another 50 years. And what an improvement on the last time capsule. I really think that thing is so beautiful. It's like a work of art and it will do a much better job at keeping everyone's keepsakes out of the weather, out of the elements. And we should have a much nicer opening of the time capsule in 50 years. And Commissioner Taylor will be here to tell us how that went. Our community has really grown considerably since the tiny hamlet of Bel Air, as it was called, was designated as the Harford County Seat in 1782. And much has changed. I mean, initially, there were 42 lots built around the county courthouse, which is still here, the jail and the sheriff's residence. And it's grown to a town of more than 10,000 people. And it's a thriving center for commerce, for local and state government, for healthcare, for dining, for cultural arts. And much has changed since we started, but much has remained the same. Because despite its growth and all the changes that Bel Air has seen over the last 150 years, Bel Air is still very much a small town and a community. It's still the people who live here and the connections that we've made with one another over the years, the bonds of friendship, of family, and of community that make Bel Air such a special place to live. While the world around us has changed certainly, our continent has been Bel Air, the place that we call home. And that's really our legacy, the values of friendship, of family, and of community that will continue to guide us into the future. And the best days, I think, of our small town are still to come. So here's to another 150 years of Bel Air, the best small town in America. So thank you and happy anniversary to our town. So we are going to recognize everyone that's here that participated and maybe we'll find a few people that showed up late a little bit. All right.
Let's begin with Nate.
All right. So we're, we're going to start with a certificate of recognition for Nate Durrell. Nate is a 2023 graduate of the John Carroll School in Bel Air, was about 60, was among about 60 local high school students who submitted designs for the Bel Air 150th Anniversary Logo. And whereas Nate's design inspired by the Bel Air Armory, the town's railroading history and its nickname of the Heart of Harford was selected by the Bel Air 150th Planning Committee. And whereas the logo has appeared on buttons, T-shirts, banners, social media websites, and other Bel Air 150 promotional materials, now therefore, the Bel Air Board of Town Commissioners does hereby recognize and thank Nate Durrell for his logo design that's been such an integral part of our year-long celebration of the Town of Bel Air's 150th. We wish Nate all the best in his future endeavors and hope will be on hand when the town's 200th anniversary is celebrated in 2074. So, thank you so much, Nate.
Thank you.
And this is our photo.
Just get a quick photo with you three and then we're going to.
Okay.
It looks like you have a contribution.
I did.
Okay. Officially, it's not sealed yet.
There's a little bit of room in there, not for anything big, but that'll certainly fit.
And you got your certificate. Leave it open. Grab your certificate and you can come right up here. A couple more people recognize.
Would you like to put that in? Is that what you're here? Go right ahead.
No, you can put it right in. You can still. There you go. Good job. It's quite clear there. Would you like to put back here and just picture me in here so this John can see.
Can you hold this up and I can take a picture? There you go.
All right.
All right. Good job.
Good job. Thank you.
You came prepared.
Didn't come prepared. All right. Next is our certificate of recognition for Julia Potler. Whereas Julia Potler serves as Events Manager for the Town of Bel Air, and whereas in her capacity as Events Manager, Ms. Potler has spearheaded planning and preparation for the town's 150th anniversary celebration in 2024. And whereas Ms. Potler has worked with town staff, nonprofit organizations, and volunteers to coordinate Bel Air 150 events, such as the Then and Now Showcase at the Bel Air Armory, the Fourth of July Anniversary Concert in Shamrock Park, and the opening of the Bel Air Centennial Time Capsule on July the 4th, plus obtained Bel Air 150 banners to hang on Main Street and at public buildings. And now therefore, the Bel Air Board of Town Commissioners does hereby recognize and thank Ms. Potler for her exceptional work in coordinating the year-long celebration of the Town of Bel Air's 150th anniversary. And we hope our residents have fond memories that carry them through the celebration of Bel Air's 200th anniversary in 2074. You did a great job. Thank you so much for that. And I know it was a lot of it. This is for you. And I think you need to go stand next to our other.
Go ahead up. Go ahead up.
Okay.
Get in there, Nate.
Are we all in this mic?
Sure, that's fine. How about if we call everybody up? Okay, so Kimberly Blanton, I think, is helping over in the police side.
I think she is. She has gone to have cake.
Chief, would you like to accept on her behalf until she gets over here? Okay.
Okay. Absolutely.
So Kimberly Blanton helped on the Bel Air 150 Committee. We'd like to recognize her. She currently works in our police department. She's on her way, from what I understand. We have Elise Gerard, who works in our Economic Development Department. Come on up, Elise. Thank you so much for your participation. If you don't mind, hold your certificate and we're going to have everyone else come up as well. We have Kelly from the Rockfield Foundation. Thank you very much for your contributions to the committee. We have Peg Lucas, whose name has been mentioned a few times this evening, but come on up for helping with the Bel Air 150 Committee. There's Kim. There's Kim. Come on over, Kim. Thank you for your participation and assistance in the Bel Air 150 Committee. We're going to ask you to have us stand right here. Chris Potts with the Historic Society, please come over. Chris Potts, thank you very much for your advice, guidance, contributions. David Anderson, our own Public Relations person, please come over, take your certificate. See, Corporal Keith Smithson, I think, is still here. Yes, he is. Thank you very much for your feedback on the 150 Committee. Julia's already up there, so she was obviously part of the committee as well. Let me grab and did we miss anyone? I think that is, is it, oh, Laura, come on up, Laura. There you go. You snuck in here. Laura, there's yours. And you have an assistant, so please make sure your assistant is with you. Is that it? There's Todd. Ty, Tyler. Okay. William, come on up, Tyler. Jenny. Tyler. That's, I don't think we've met before, Tyler.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Thank you for your, for your assistance on the committee. And I believe that is it.
Mike, how about you take a picture?
That's what I'm going to do. Yes, 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 yes. Would you like to use one of these to just kind of go through, just, they're all individualized.
Well, we thank each and every one of you for all your hard work this year. It's much appreciated. And everyone does have their certificate, which reads something like this. Community Member, Bel Air 150 Committee, whereas the Town of Bel Air honors and expresses appreciation for you, for your service as a member of the Bel Air 150th Anniversary Planning Committee. You've all been part of a dedicated group of town staff and community members who help plan and execute the Bel Air 150 Anniversary Celebrations. Now therefore, on behalf of the citizens of the Town of Bel Air, we, the Bel Air Board of Town Commissioners, are honored to have the opportunity to recognize you for your contributions to a wonderful anniversary commemoration. So thank you each and everyone.
We'll have one more bigger, better photo than that because you're all spread out.
How about some people step up on the ledge there?
Back ledge.
Yep.
Kind of scooch in.
Yeah. There we go. Let's do one with just the committee.
Yes, it's going to be a big picture.
There we go.
I think that's good. And we do have some closing remarks.
Yeah. It's like a balance beam.
It's such a special opportunity to get to celebrate 150 years of Bel Air. The mayor said it best, you know, when we think about Bel Air, we think about those famous buildings, we think about Town Hall, we think about the courthouse. I'm sorry? Oh, yes. Don't leave. Don't leave. Big photo at the end. Thank you, Mike. We think about the courthouse, we think about Main Street, we think about Bond Street, we think about all those lovely places. And those buildings are very nice and, and they remind us what brings us together. But as the mayor said, what really binds Bel Air together is its people and the culture of service that its people observe. People like Holly, people like Kayla, people like Phil Robb, people like all of the committee members who just piled up on this dais here, and the thousands more who live in and outside the town limits of Bel Air that truly make our community special. It is the privilege of a lifetime to get to serve this community and serve it with such wonderful people. Town staff, volunteers, the people sitting across from me now, it looks like I'm testifying in court. The town would fall apart without them. And that's not, that's to say nothing of the tens of people and hundreds of people that work under them to make the town operate for its citizens every day. So the past 150 years of Bel Air have been great. The next 150 will be excellent, and I am sure of that. And I look forward to seeing everyone in 50 years.
Well, we have to officially lock the time capsule now. Ceremonial locking of the time capsule. And then we'd like to do a photo with town staff, all the commissioners, and the committee members as well, too. So that's why we didn't ask you to hold your horses and not leave Town Hall just yet. So Chair and Vice Chair, I believe, should be the appropriate members locking the time capsule, since we have two locks.
Jim and Mary stand alongside.
There you go. You guys, would you guys like to come up and stand alongside? Okay. Oh, fantastic. We have the Time Magazine, Year in Review, as a contribution from our Public Relations Specialist. And we have Copy of the Aegis. Excellent. Please place both of those items in there. Do you have a sales receipt on this? But I think both of those have a price tag on it. We need to, we need to turn in the receipt to the finance department. Hold on one second. Come on around me. Okay, we have the ceremonial brass-plated locks that we picked up today from Cortland Hardware, Ace Hardware. Locked. The time capsule's officially sealed for the next 50 years. Round of applause. And now, if you all don't mind, let's come up in front of the dais. And who has the keys? They're thrown away. Oh, okay. They're thrown away, so no one can get in there. So they have to be cut over. We have to get a torch to. Oh, and then we'll burn it. That's right. So all of you, including town staff, please come up to the front of the dais. We're going to have a large group photo in recognition of our 150 years.
All right. So the next, next 150 years begins. All right, so the next, next 150 years begins. At this time, we will have the Public Hearing on Resolution 1242-24. It is 7:47. This is the Town of Bel Air Fee Schedule Amendments. Is there anyone present here who wishes to make a public comment at this time on this piece of legislation only? All right, I see no one is approaching the podium or raising their hand, so we will close the public hearing at 7:47 as well. Next, we will move on to unfinished business, which is Resolution 1242-24 by Town of Bel Air Fee Schedule Amendments. May I have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that Resolution Number 1242-24 amending the Town of Bel Air's fee schedule with an effective date of January 1, 2025, be approved by the Board of Town Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Rutledge. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Chance. And this would be Mr. Krantz.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the vote to approve Resolution 1242-24 amending the Town Fee Schedule. Commissioner Rutledge?
Aye.
Commissioner Chismar?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Actually, we were.
Comment?
Maybe remind the public what this item is.
Oh. Okay. Of course. As, as we interrupt that vote for a public service announcement. The Fee Schedule Amendments for the Town of Bel Air include quite a few. So, with town staff has recommended a few amendments, the tax sale advertising, a change in the description to the tax sale advertising fee. It's not necessarily a fee, but a language change. There's a legal review of development requirements, which is gonna include a new fee. Billing and construction management fee has been amended, or the only staff changes to the fee schedule. There are quite a few other fees that are being changed to go along with and coincide with Hartford County Government, which increased multiple building permit fees. These fees will take effect on January 1, 2025, hence the motion to make this effective on January 1, 2025 as well. The town does need to adjust our fee schedule to reflect these changes, and they include the following list. Building permits and other related fees, including commercial, industrial, institutional, pub, utilities, public or private, and commercial tenant occupancy certificate, as well as Group R, R1, R2, and R3 for residential buildings, 1 and 2 family dwellings, R3 and R4, hotel buildings, R1, dormitory buildings, and assisted living, multifamily apartments and condominiums in the R2 for individually owned units, and multifamily apartments, condominiums in the R2 for rental units, including additions and alterations for decks, porches, balconies, and basements, occupant structures or room additions for residential accessory buildings, sheds, pellet, wood stove, sump pump, basement gutter, foundation repairs, and under the category of miscellaneous, commercial residential retaining walls, tanks above ground or underground, demolition without a separate permit, swimming pools, hot tub, amendment to the permit, the application before an issued permit, and a fee for amended revised building plans after issued permit. And these are all included on the Town of Bel Air's website, if you'd like to see the details of those Fee Schedule Amendments.
Thank you, Mr. Krantz. Whoops, thank you, Mr. Krantz. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Krantz about the Fee Schedule?
No questions. I just, thank you for that reminder, Mr. Krantz. I just wanted to say, before we, we take the vote on this, that I appreciate the work that the staff has done on this, and that each of these changes, each of these amendments to the Fee Schedule is done with an eye towards protecting taxpayer dollars from unnecessary expense and having those who are incurring the services of the town pay for things that taxpayers would otherwise be paying for. So, these are protective measures, and I greatly appreciate the town, the town staff's work on that. And that's why I'll be voting in favor.
And in addition, many of them are passed through from Hartford County, so we must have our Fee Schedule agree with theirs.
If we did not, the taxpayer would pay the difference.
The taxpayer would pay the difference, and that would be ugly, yes. All right, any further questions for Mr. Krantz? All right, I think we're ready for a vote.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the vote on Resolution 1242-24. Commissioner Rutledge?
Aye.
Commissioner Chismar?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Chance?
Aye.
And Chair Edding?
Aye.
Resolution is approved. Thank you.
All right. Under New Business Number 8, we have Ordinance 836-24 to purchase property owned by Mount Royal Management on South Atwood Road. May I have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that Ordinance Number 836-2024 approving the purchase of real property located at the intersection of South Atwood Road and West McPhail Road be received by the Board of Town Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. May I have a second?
Yes, Madam Chair. I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Chismar. And this is Mr. Small? Or Mr., okay, that's what I thought.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hartford County Public School System is in the process of improving and expanding the Homestead Wakefield Elementary School to replace and upgrade the facilities for schools in the local, for students, rather, in the local attendance area. This effort presented an opportunity to update the access to the school campus by providing an emergency access road from the intersection of South Atwood and West McPhail and connecting to Route 924. This access will be used by emergency responders to improve the response time and transportation distance for school campus and residents in the area. As part of this effort, the acquisition of a small area of property between the campus and the right-of-way was needed. The Town of Bel Air worked with the Hartford County Public School System to create an agreement to provide emergency access by working through operational and financial details to make the needed drive a reality. Wakefield Manor Associates LLP is the owner of Wakefield Manor Residential Community, where the land was needed. The owner was contacted by the town to acquire the land for the road and negotiate an amicable purchase agreement. The land area necessary for the access is 16,334 square feet, or 0.375 acres, as shown on the attached subdivision plan and description of the property, which is in your packet. The purchase agreement allows for a 50-foot area, providing a 25-foot wide paved, excuse me, 24-foot wide paved driveway to be designed, engineered, and constructed by the Hartford County Public School System, with funds provided by a local fiscal authority. Acquisition of the Wakefield Manor property will address one of the primary responsibilities of the town as part of this development. The purchase agreement is attached to the, is attached with your packet to provide the contract for purchase along with the description of the property. The staff recommends receipt of Ordinance Number 836-24 by the Board of Town Commissioners, and a public hearing has been scheduled. It's an off-date. It will be scheduled for January the 14th, 2025, at 5:15 PM in Town Hall. Notably, that's a work session night, and this meeting will be a one-off from other Town Hall meetings, ma'am.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Hopkins?
No.
Okay, I know this has been sort of a long-running project, and we are now seeing it almost come to a close. And we will be happy to have that finished very soon. All right, anything else?
Madam Chair, I would just comment that, you know, as I've mentioned before, I think this is a crucial acquisition. I know there's been some questions raised about, you know, will the road ever be built? There's some, this is the opportunity to buy the land, and it's not coming back at this price. And no matter who builds that road in the town, in the future, the town might end up stepping up and building a road. But that road could save lives, and that road is a meaningful safety need. And I think it's an excellent acquisition. It's, um, I know there's a lot of controversy in the past about the whole project over there. They got resolved, some settlements, et cetera. And this is just another important step to bring this to a close and to seal the deal. So, I've been in favor of it from go and continue to be strongly in favor of it. And then, congratulations, Mr. Hopkins, for leading us through this. To counsel, Liz, thank you very much for the hard work. And I know that we've received other advice through the process, through Chip McLeod, and on the Eastern Shore, an excellent attorney. So, um, just full steam ahead. Thank you.
Well said. Any other comments? All right, is there any member of the public here this evening that would like to comment on Ordinance 836-24 to purchase this property? All right, seeing no one perching the podium or raising their hand, we are ready for a vote.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is for the vote to receive Ordinance 836-24, purchasing a parcel of land in the Wakefield Manor apartment complex for the, creating an emergency access to Homestead Wakefield Elementary School. Commissioner Rutledge?
Aye.
Commissioner Chismar?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Chance?
Aye.
And Chair Edding?
Aye.
Thank you. The ordinance is received. Will be a public hearing on January 14th at 5:15 PM here at Town Hall.
Thank you. Next, we have Ordinance 837-24 and Ordinance Amending Article 7 and 14 and Permitted Use Tables of the Development Regulations as related to mixed-use centers in Chapter 165 of the Bel Air Town Code. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I, I recommend that Ordinance 834, excuse me, 837-24, revising Town Code, Chapter 165, Article 8, Performance Standards 14, Definitions and Attachment 1, permitted use tables related to mixed-use centers be received by the Board, the Bel Air Board of Town Commissioners.
And I think you meant to say Article 7. There's darn many numerals. You said 8.
Okay, Article 7.
There you go.
Too many i's in there.
Yes. I'll second that motion. So, at this time, Mr. Small?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Regulation of specific uses is provided through the Town of Bel Air Development Regulations text found in 160, Chapter 165, Part 2. Requirements related to mixed-use centers are found in Article 7, entitled Development Performance Standards, Section 165-104, which is definitions, and Section 165, Attachment 1, which is permitted use tables. Recently, two developments obtained approval under the use reg designation of mixed-use center. Question of what limits would be appropriate for the land use allocation within a mixed-use center had been brought forward. In addition, what limitation would be, would the mixed use, mix of uses provide for the density of the residential spaces? The relationship to the land use designation in the comprehensive plan or zoning district also becomes a legitimate challenge to any new mixed-use development. By applying a minimum percentage between residential and commercial uses based upon the underlying land use designation, any mixed-use proposal must adhere to the intent of the comprehensive plan by providing majority of the, of the designated use. Changes to the definition would address this issue. In addition, hard numbers tend to paint both the developer and the town into a corner by not allowing for a variation in design and correction for prevailing market trends. Changes to the performance standards would allow for a, an applicant to adjust the use limitation by elaborating on the details of the project, improving to the planning commission that the project has exceeded the minimum standards. Some minor adjustments have also been made to the permitted use charge to clean up the code. Staff recommends Ordinance 837-24 amending Section 165-53I, 2G, Section 165-104, and Attachment 1, permitted use tables be received by the Bel Air Board of Town Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Small. Any questions for Mr. Small?
Okay, go ahead. No, you go.
Yeah, Director Small. Could you give, share with us some perspective on what the market demands are right now on commercial space versus residential space?
Well, there's a much higher demand for residential space than there is for commercial space right now. Is that what you're asking?
Yes. Yeah, and so, um, I'm just wondering where the 50% threshold then really comes from, rather than just letting the latitude of that decision to be made by the planning commission?
A similar decision was rendered by the planning commission for Hartford Mall, where they required 50%. The, I know what you're getting at. If there's a, a choice of letting the, the developer propose to the planning commission, what they would like to see is a mix of uses, that's certainly an option to pursue. Right now, we're trying to create a stronger connection to the existing comprehensive plan.
So, I was wondering, um, staff recommends this, what, what, I, I get, I get the idea of making the connection there, but I'm, I'm concerned about legislation that isn't recognizing the economic realities of what's transpired in the last year, year and a half nationwide with regard to vacant commercial spaces. And I'm just wondering whether there's any consideration taken into that?
I think that addition at the end of the performance standards, where it allows for a, a reduction of that 50% down to 40, allows for some leniency on that hard and fast percentage. But, you know, that's certainly also up to the town commissioners to determine whether or not there, that needs to be lower, or whether or not that is a, that there needs to be a percentage. I think one of the, one of the issues with that is mixed use is a mixed use until you have some kind of a symbiotic relationship between the two, especially as it relates to parking. The whole idea of mixed use and some of the other items that are produced by mixed use is to create an efficiency of design by how, having those parking spaces be shared. But that's also use spa, uh, built spaces, amenities, things like that would also be shared. If you have 90% of one thing and 10% of another, then the, that use relationship deteriorates. I am not, you know, as far as what we've looked at, as far as the percentage, I'm certainly flexible in that sense.
Yeah. This may be a little beyond your, your expertise, and if it is, you can say so. I've just, was the Economic Development Commission consulted on this proposal? Do you know?
No.
We did not get a chance. The Economic Development Commission has not met in business meetings since November. And so, as a result, due to the timeframe of these pieces of legislation being provided to the board as of Friday, the ECDC has not had a chance to review them. I have asked Director Robertson to put them on the agenda for our January 9th meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. I was, to get into the weeds a little bit on the mixed-use center definition here, I, I see that amenities for both the commercial and residential patrons or occupants was struck, and now amenities are only focused for residential uses. Can you explain that? What's the thinking there?
For the most part, the, it, there is no requirement in the code for amenities for commercial. Those amenities are emphasized when you start to go beyond the 50%. But right now, in the rest of the code, there's no requirement for amenities in commercial. So, that was, that's why it was removed.
Now, if, if there's a zone, what, what zones can apply for, for a mixed-use center under this legislation that's proposed, compared to what we have now?
Right now, and this somewhat cleans up some of that, because there are two, mixed use is shown in two different locations in the, in the permitted use tables. Under residential, it's special development in a B1, B2, B2A, and B3, B3A zones. In the retail, it's, it also includes the RO zone. So, we're trying to, that's somewhat clean up to make sure that that matches the performance standards.
And then, on this table chart change, then, it would be available for SD special development?
Yes.
And that process goes through the planning commission?
Yes.
Or does it go through you administratively?
No, always goes through the planning commission for special development.
So, what this proposes to do is expand the, um, option for mixed-use residential primary to the RO?
It is shown under one place as in the RO, and the other place it's not. Where, so what we're doing is saying that it is included in the RO. So, we had to pick one or the other, either get, get it out of the RO or, or keep it in. So, because there was a conflict between the, the retail and the residential permitted use tables.
So, you cannot apply for mixed use in any of the R1, 2, or 3. That's the law now. That would be the law in the future, based on this.
Correct, yeah. Correct, yeah.
And what's the difference between the residential mixed use and the service mixed use if all of these are basically business?
There would not be any difference. They would be all the same.
Why do we have two categories?
We had them in two categories because some people are going to look, someone's going to look at mixed use and say, oh, I need to look in the residential category, or I need to look in the service category. We could, if we wanted to match it up completely to the performance standards, we just have it in the service category and that's it. And I'm certainly fine with that. I was just trying to create an ease of research.
So see, the other proposal I wanted to look at was in the body of, I guess, the deliberation of the Planning Commission on Performance Standards, Section I, where there's language added that shared parking between all development types must be provided throughout the development. What does that mean?
Right now, a mixed-use development can come in and they are, they don't have to provide shared parking between all the uses. And a good example of that is the Hartford Mall where the residential component is not shared for the most part, with the exception of like twelve, fifteen spaces, is not shared. They're exclusive to the residential. That kind of runs in, in the face of a mixed-use concept. The idea of mixed use is the sharing of parking along with other spaces and allowing, it's an economy of use.
You know, a lot of people have different opinions, you know what they say about opinions, on, on the mall project. But one of the things about them having an exclusive parking garage for their residence struck me as being an excellent security move.
It is, yes.
And we're saying they wouldn't be able to, a place like, a project like that wouldn't be able to do that. They'd have to let the parking garage, if they want to build one, be open to all of the people who say, I'm going shopping.
For a special development, the planning commission can waive any portion of the performance standards, something that's not allowed by, if somebody had a special exception and go into the Board of Appeals, that's not permitted.
Well, why do we use the language must then instead of may?
We can, again, this is something that the Board of Town Commissioners can change if they like. But we can say, you can still say must and the planning commission can waive that requirement.
Right. And we haven't had a work session on this bill, have we?
No.
Okay.
We're having one on the fourteenth.
So there's no work session before it's being asked to be received and this such, I'm not asking, I'm just stating for the record that, 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 that's the case of some of this like ins and outs type of thing here. Okay, well, thanks for your answering those questions. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Rutledge asked a lot of the questions I had. I think we're having a work session right now.
In a way, yes.
I, I do have, I do have a few more questions, though. You, you answered a lot of the questions that I had. Let's look on page two at Section two B. First, all of those bullet, bulleted numerals under B, those are for projects that wish to have that fifty percent lowered, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So when we say excellence of design and consistency with the comprehensive plan, where is that language coming from?
That language is more generic for the planning commission to utilize that it's not just the same as any, any other mixed use. It has to be a step higher, more significant.
That makes sense. And you answered the part about public amenities. I have another question about this table. I want to drill into this a little bit more. We talk about the difference, you said there's no difference in terms of how residential and service would be treated. I'm a little bit confused because the way that I understood it, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that if something is residential, it would have to be at least fifty percent residential. And if something was commercial, it would have to be at least fifty percent commercial when we talk about underlying use.
So the only, the only zoning category that could permit something that has more than fifty percent residential would be the R-O.
Okay.
Or if they are in a, a district where the underlying land use designation indicates residential. Most of them don't. Most of them are commercial. But, so when you look at zoning, zoning and land use designation really pretty much match, not quite.
Okay. And, and, I mean, off the top, we're saying that there are some parcels in, in a B-one, B-two, B-three that are designated residential?
Not too many. Not that, I mean...
Just a handful?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hardly in that I know of.
Okay, I appreciate that. I'm trying to wrap my head around. So is there a reason why we call it, I see we're striking retail here, we're retaining service. Is there a reason why we're doing residential service as opposed to like, you know, residential, commercial?
Right now, the performance standards for a mixed use are located in the service category of the, of Article seven.
Okay.
Because they're in the service category, we wanted to make sure that there was a connection between the service category in the permitted use tables and the service category and the performance standards. It was found in retail. I could move, I could propose to move the performance standards from service to retail. I didn't, I mean, it was six of one, half a dozen the other. And then we also, it's also listed in the residential section. And so it's, it's kind of just being corrected so that when you look up mixed use, you're either looking up in the residential section of the permitted use tables or in the service area. We could leave it in the retail if, if the, if the town board prefers.
So the only place where you'd be getting more than fifty percent residential is in that R-O?
For the most part, yes.
Right. Unless this exemption were attached and you dropped that commercial threshold down to forty percent.
Right, or the underlying land use designation is residential.
Or the, right, right. Good point. Okay. And so finally, on this piece of legislation, when we're looking at the changes, we're talking about this, this amendment to the threshold, this fifty to forty. Point four says that there must be a, they must show the development provides for a community need as described in the Bel Air Comprehensive Plan. Just to paraphrase Commissioner Rutledge, what does that mean? You know, what just might be an example of something that a developer might be able to say, here's a community need, this is why I should be allowed to drop lower to forty percent?
A, a good example might be something that we actually applied in the past to Gateway Apartments, the Gateway Condos, I'm sorry. Gateway Condos had a pathway shown through their property in the comprehensive plan. They, and they had a responsibility to provide open space amenity. When they did, when they came in for development, that was their requirement. And they couldn't really say no to it because it's in the comp plan. And they had that responsibility for open space. This would be the same thing. There might be something shown on a particular property that is in our community facilities section that is, or described narrativeally in the same way, and we could use the comprehensive plan as a basis by which to, to require that particular type of, of recreation or amenity.
Okay. So in order to drop below that fifty percent, a project has to provide some sort of community need?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I'm being the planning commission.
Sure, sure. But this is our, you know, instruction to the planning commission about what they ought to consider. And obviously, we don't have oversight over what they do with that, but they follow the code faithfully.
Right. And they will, one thing to clarify here, the, the timing of this is, is, there are several entities that have not seen it, and planning commission is one of them.
Right, right. And we're certainly interested in their feedback, and I hope that their, their January meeting has this on the agenda.
Yes.
Okay, good.
Just so I didn't, I just want to make sure I didn't miss a point. This has not been run by the planning commission, correct? This bill, this, correct? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you, Director Small. Those are my, my preliminary questions. So I appreciate that.
So, yeah, Mr. Small, on, on the, on the guidelines for the exception on paragraph B, like you said, there's the four criteria underneath of that. Is that, that they must meet all? Is the way, the way it's written, does that mean they must meet all four of those criteria?
Because they are under the heading of guidelines, it really becomes the planning commission's decision. If they look at something and, I'll give you an example, and this is something that Liz and I have talked about, is that, let's say somebody's at forty-eight and a half percent. The, that is so close to the fifty percent that the planning commission may, or may not, require all four of these things be done. They may look at some of these and determine that they're, that it's not needed. I would think that when you get down to the, to the lower half of that, then you are going to see some more requirements coming from the planning commission that'll probably be a bit heftier.
So the way it's written right now, it's, it's not being said they must meet all fours. It's left to the discretion of the planning commission as to how many of those four. Okay.
Yeah, maybe, they may be in the location where there is no need to have amenities, maybe they're right next to a park. And that's where there's some latitude that is being provided, the planning commission to make a determination.
Kevin, I just would like to know, when will the members of the planning commission actually see this?
Based on what will happen tonight, I plan to finish the agenda and probably it'll go out this Thursday. And so they'll have, they'll be able to review it in, as a group on the second of January.
Review on the second and vote when?
Well, they would vote, I assume, that night. But if they don't, that's something I, I can't control. They'd have to determine that.
And when will the members of the public be invited back here to Town Hall to hear more about this, not just at the planning commission?
I think the next full meeting would be the twenty-first of January. Is that right?
That is correct.
I believe so.
So that would be when the public hearing takes place, assuming it is received tonight.
So that would be after the review of the planning commission and economic community development, which is...
Yeah, I don't know when you guys meet.
Yes.
Director Small, just, just so I can understand the, sort of get my sea legs here and all this stuff and procedures back and forth. We recently passed modification to the open space.
Yes.
Which I think was Commissioner Taylor's bill.
Yes.
And he took that before the planning commission to vet it before it was finally drafted and submitted to be received, didn't he?
I believe so, yeah.
And that, that can happen. And I had to go on myself before the planning commission to talk about a potential amendment on the school proximity overcrowded schools kind of, kind of issue, just to get feedback before that was received, I think.
Yes.
Okay.
That's the typical process.
Okay. Thank you.
But we can amend this bill right on the twenty-first, next Town Hall meeting. We can, we can make amendments to this and make changes as necessary based upon feedback from the planning commission, economic development.
What's being received tonight? Are you saying that you can amend what's being received tonight?
We can amend that on the, on the twenty-first of January at the next Town Hall meeting.
I believe so, yeah.
Right. Based upon feedback that we receive from the planning commission, economic development, and our work session.
Right.
Right.
And we also have sixty days to vote on a post-introduction, and then it will die.
Then it dies, right.
So if we don't feel comfortable voting on the twenty-first, we will have other opportunities to discuss it, amend it.
Right.
Although I do think if, if it is introduced tonight, we would only have one board meeting after the twenty-first to do that because we wait a month. So just something to think about for timing purposes, that would be, that would be sensitive.
And from my perspective, I think we've been sort of operating without a really fully fleshed out definition of what is a mixed use. And the mall property highlighted that. I really think in this county, in this town, we could build residential from like one end to the other, but it doesn't make for a vibrant community. We need our shopping areas. We need the malls to main, to still be a commercial shopping area for people. I know Commissioner Rutledge mentioned that there's been a change and there's a big demand for residential as opposed to commercial, but I'm not sure if you're thinking of office space or shopping space. I know office space is like a different animal right now. I would like to see us give guidance to the planning commission so that it's not just an open-ended decision for them, but to give them some parameters to work with, some more specifics. And I think this bill does that. So with that, does anyone else have any more comments on this bill? Is there any member?
Not at this moment, yeah.
Is there any member of the public here who wishes to make a public comment on this bill? Yes, ma'am. We know who you are, but you'll still have to state your name and address for the record. And you know the rules, three minutes. Let, let me, let us get that microphone on for you. I think it was turned off after the presentation.
Officially. I'm Ag Lucas, five sixteen Robinson Street, Bel Air. I just have some questions. I looked at the agenda for the work session, and there was nothing at all on this, on the work session agenda about this sort of, the last couple items that are coming up, this item and the next one. How fast did this happen? And, okay, it's only agenda for tonight, but that's awfully quick. Did you talk about it in work session? Did anything come up in between? Why now? Why so fast? Is my concern. And if you're going to have a, another, January twenty-first is when you're going to deal with it again, I believe?
Actually, we'll be on the work session for, I think it's the fourteenth of January as well.
Right.
And then again on the twenty-first.
Okay. But then public input would be when? Before the twenty-first or on the twenty-first?
You're welcome to give public input at any time via email, letter, whatever you choose, but there will be a public hearing probably on the twenty-first.
On the twenty-first. And then we'll, that would, I'm just trying to clarify the process. Then you will take a vote at that time, either yea or nay to approve it?
We may or may not vote at that time. We have sixty days to vote.
But is there a possibility that you would vote at that time?
There is, yes.
Okay. I'm just concerned about the speed with which this is taking place and the fact that people need to know what is going on rather than having it just thrown out at the meeting without former information given. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other member of the public here this evening that wishes to make a comment? All right. Anything further from the board?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I, I would like to see this not be received and go to the process of a work session with the draft of it, go to the Economic Development Commission, go to the planning commission, get all that input, and then bring a bill after a work session with that input to, to be introduced, to be received. I may not be in the majority in that position this evening, but that's my position. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rutledge. Anything else from the board members?
I agree wholeheartedly with that, Mr. Rutledge. I, I absolutely feel like I was made aware of this coming about on Thursday of last week. And here it is before us, boom. And the public, I think, deserves more time. I think we need to have it officially on a work session agenda. So I agree wholeheartedly with Mr. Rutledge.
To avoid, because I think that there are valid, I think that there are valid concerns. And if, if the board is not all on the same page about the posture by which the legislation is received, instead of outright killing the legislation, I think it may be prudent to lay the motion to receive on the table so that it can be picked back up at the next, at the next Town Hall session. And, and we can continue this conversation after ECDC and the planning commission have had a chance to review it and after we've had a chance to talk about those things at the work session. So it, instead of voting down the motion to receive, which I don't think any of us want to, you know, stop this conversation dead in its tracks because it's an important conversation to have, it may be prudent to lay this motion on the table.
I, I'm from the standpoint of, you know, we're still going to have work sessions and we're still going to have open meetings, whether it's done before you put it in for receivership or not. whether it's done before you put it in for receivership or not, cause it all can be amended. And we have sixty days to amend it. So, it's not really, we're, we're not jumping through, uh, we're not skipping any, any processes here. It's the same processes, it's just whether you receive it first and then discuss it, or discuss it first and then come up with a bill that, uh, doesn't need to be amended. We can, we can amend it. It's not a big deal. You know, you, you go to the county council meetings and all, they have ten, twelve different amendments to their bills. So, we can still receive this, discuss it on the fourteenth work session. We have a two-January planning commission, the economic development is when?
The ninth.
The ninth of January, both of them before the work session, so we'll get feedback from them. And we, you know, we have till, you know, February to craft it, and it, whatever changes we wanna make, and then approve it, whatever we wanna pass. So, it's, it's just, you're just saying, have a work order, have a work session, and then receive it, drafted and receive it, that, you know, it's just a weak difference, and it, I don't, I don't, I don't see how it makes much difference. We're, we're having all the elements, so they're out of sequence. Doesn't, the sequence doesn't, doesn't have any meaning.
Well, I, I think the sequence does have some meaning. Um, I think that it informs the way that we approach the issue. But I, I would just, and I, I'm with you, I, I don't think that, I don't think anybody's trying to pull the wool over anybody's eyes. Absolutely not. Um, I think that this will go in front of everyone it needs to go to. The question is, do we wanna give ourselves thirty days to look at it after the work session, or sixty days after the work session? Because if we introduce it tonight, we're basically throwing out a month of time, because it will expire, you know, in mid-February as opposed to expiring in mid-March. You know, between now and the next town hall meeting is over a month, and it's the holidays. And I think this is such an important conversation. I think there are a lot of, actually, you know, very good changes in, in this, in this legislation. I think that coming up with a, with a stronger definition of mixed use is in the benefit of the town. But I also think that it's in the benefit of the town to think about this longer. And having, having heard the thoughts from Commissioner Chance and Commissioner Rutledge, I do think that tabling this particular motion, taking back up the motion in January to then formally introduce it, and it can still, at that point, be voted on, if we're, if, at that point, we're in a posture that we think is appropriate, it can be voted on as early as the first meeting in February, I believe. But we'll give ourselves more time to really review it together, as opposed to about burning thirty days, uh, over the holidays.
And I really think out of respect for Economic Development Commission, um, and the planning commission, that having the, act real good time to look at this and, and work it through. I just, I, I do believe that the people on Economic Development Commission will go, where the heck did this come from? When did that happen? And, and I just don't feel good about it. I just don't feel good about it.
Well, I'm gonna make, uh, the motion to, to lay, um, the receipt of ordinance eight thirty-seven twenty-four on the table.
Do I have a second?
Second. I know.
Too many.
Who was that second?
And by the way, I think having this conversation tonight was a good thing, because there were a lot of preliminary questions that I just wasn't sure about, that Mr. Small was able to ans, answer for me. So now we'll have a head start on it, but I think the formal process should start in January. So that's why I made the motion. But I appreciate the discussion tonight to, um, to get the preliminary look at it.
Uh, Commissioner Taylor, also just to point out, we were talking about having, uh, you have a work session on the fourteenth. We have already requested a closed session with the commissioners, so we can give you a little, you can look at it if you have any legal questions or issues, or need expertise of Mr. Small in a more confidential setting. We've already set that up. If, you know, everybody's okay, we can cancel it. We just wanted to get on the books, so it's there. All right. In that case, we have a motion and a second, so we're calling for the vote. Mr. Grants.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is for the motion, to vote on the motion, to lay ordinance eight-three-seven dash-two-four on the table. Commissioner Rutledge?
Aye.
Commissioner Chismar?
Nay.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Chance?
Aye.
Commissioner Eddy?
Nay.
The motion to lay on the table passes. Three to two. Thank you.
All right, we'll now take up ordinance eight thirty-eight dash twenty-four and ordinance amending Article Three, Ten, and Lot Requirements Tables of the Development Regulations as related to density limits in Chapter One-Sixty-Five of the Bel Air Town Code. May I have a motion?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair. I recommend, I recommend that ordinance number eight thirty-eight dash twenty-four revising Town Code Chapter One-Sixty-Five, Article Three, Zoning Districts, Article Ten, Accessory Uses, and the Table of Lot Requirements Related to Density Be Received by the Bel Air Board of Town Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Chismar, and I second that motion. Mr. Small?
Thank you. The B-two Central Business District, the B-two A Central Business Gateway District, and the B-three A's General Business Gateway Districts were completely revised as form-based codes in the, in the town of Bel Air in two thousand and ten. Form-based code refers to the type of land regulation that focuses on controlling the physical appearance, appearance and design of buildings, including the relationship to the public realm, like streets and sidewalks, rather than solely separating different land uses, such as commercial, residential, industrial, like traditional zoning does right now. Most traditional zoning is what's called Euclidean, named after a little town in Ohio. And, um, that Euclidean zoning is, um, basically, everything is separate. Essentially, it priori, uh, a, uh, form-based zone prioritizes how a development looks and functions within the community's desired urban form, rather than just what the uses are allowed on the property. As part of the Form-Based Code changes in two thousand and ten, density limits were removed from the zoning criteria in favor of architectural and engineering design standards, which are extensive. Some of the density limits were expanded in the residential zones during subsequent years, um, by the town board. However, B-two, B-two A, and B-three A remained without density limits and lot, and some of the lot requirements. This was in part due to the, uh, de-emphasis of a development's use and the tendency of parking requirements as a more practical limiting factor of residential density. In addition, urban areas tend to suffer from density limits because they're, of their higher land value and limited size of their property. The proposed ordinance will apply density limitations that are similar to those found in the R-three, R-O, B-one, and B-three districts. Many of the regulations for setbacks and building height in the lot requirements tables refer back to the respective zoning district code section established in two thousand and ten to address the more detailed constraints found there. In other words, all of those very detailed limitations that are in the zoning districts are what controls how far a building is set back, because it's also dependent about how tall the building is, too. In addition, displaced requirements for accessory structures are added to Article Ten as applying to all districts. Staff recommends ordinance eight-three-eight twenty-four amending Section One-Sixty-five thirty, One-Sixty-five thirty-one, and One-Sixty-five thirty-three in zoning, and Section One-Sixty-five sixty-eight accessory uses, and One-Sixty-five Attachment Two Table of Lot Requirements Be Received by the Bel Air Board of Town Commissioners.
Thank you, Director Small. Any questions for Mr. Small?
Oh, yes, Madam Chair, I do. Um, so I appreciate that backgrounder that you just provided there. If I could call you Kevin, is that okay?
That's fine. It seems like a work session already.
Yeah, all right. So, the, um, so, the, the whole concept of going to a form-based code back in two thousand and ten, I guess there's a pretty significant deliberation in history on that in and of itself. Were, were you with the town then?
I was not.
Okay. But, um, like, this evening, we had a gentleman who just received the award, Mr. Robb. Um, as Mr. Cahill pointed out, spent on the planning commission for thirty years and probably seems very sharp guy, still a very sharp guy, probably could provide some background on that, maybe even some other people. But this particular bill wasn't run by the planning commission before its introduction this evening, was it?
No.
Okay. So, as far as the wisdom of the form-based zoning versus, I guess, the comparative would be the Euclidean?
Yes.
Like everything in a box, everything no flexibility, okay. So, um, have nothing to do with the mathematics of Euclid though, but the name of the town, okay.
Don't mix those up.
All right. So, that, 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 that's just one of my questions. The other one was, um, on the discussion point, the proposed ordinance will apply density limitations that are similar to those found in R-three, R-O, and B-one. But when we get into the detail on the chart, there are some material changes here being proposed in the R-three, R-O, and B-one. Isn't that correct?
That's correct.
So, let's just look at the R-three change that's being proposed, because we already have density limits in the R-three, correct?
We do, yes.
Okay, so that's, so I'm just sort of like, when I looked at this, I'm looking at, okay, the purpose of the bill is to make changes or add some density law where it doesn't exist. But the bill goes further than that purpose and makes some density changes, even in the ones that have density regulations, correct?
Correct, it makes some adjustments, yes.
So I wanted to just focus on this one here on the R-three table. If you'll look at the R-three table there, sir. Under Use Classification, Townhouse?
Yes.
A townhouse, and correct me if I'm wrong, are three houses built together, common walls, at least three in a row, correct?
At least three units, correct.
At least three units, okay.
And all share a wall, yeah.
And then, the minimum lot area then to be able to build three townhouses in an R-three is sixty thousand square feet?
Yeah, basically an acre and a half.
Yeah, eh, one point three-nine, I think. Yeah, it's, um, I did a little calculation for, if, if I'm right about, but yeah, that, that's, um, yeah. So... Can you share with me the perspective on why in R-three would a person who wants to build three townhouses have to find one point four acres to buy in the town of Bel Air?
The idea there is to, well, the idea there is to, to create a requirement that, that somebody would not be able to come in, buy a single-family ha, um, lot, and then erect three townhouses in that, on that lot. The, that somewhat breaks up the stability of a neighborhood, because now you're, you're introducing a, a land use type that is foreign, and it's not, um, necessarily has an anchoring of, of, uh, an established size and design. So, we're looking at something that would have thirty townhouses instead of just three.
So, it, it's either go big or go home.
In a way, yes.
So, the current law is the minimum lot size would be eighteen hundred square feet?
Well, the, the overall lot, yeah, minimum lot size is for the, um, townhouse itself. So it's eighteen foot wide by a hundred feet deep. And so, each one of the, uh, of the, um, uh, of the townhouses would have to have that size. And then, um, the, you could put three of them together, and that would be something that, you know, maybe if somebody purchases two lots, they're not side by side. But that's the, the minimum lot size in general that a, that a townhouse would need. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, right. So there's a number of lots in town here, um, that, you know, have like eighty-six hundred square feet. Nine thousand square feet.
Right.
Currently, they'd be eligible to, 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 to build their townhouses if they were in R-three.
Right.
But now, instead of that owner being able to do that, and just build just three townhouses, or... That's off the table, and it's gonna gross up to sixty thousand square feet.
That would be off the table.
It seems like a huge, I mean, the multiplier there to me is just like, woo, big. And the reality of what's available seems to be unrealistic.
Well, for the most part, uh, when you have town, townhouse, townhouses being developed, they're a townhouse development. They are a community. Versus what I tend to refer to it as the college park design, where somebody comes in and, and, uh, again, finds those single-family lots, builds a small little apartment on it, or a stack of three or four townhouses, and then walks away. And yet, everything around it is single-family. It's, tends to, I don't think it helps the neighborhood, and that's something I think that you will have to decide whether or not that's appropriate.
So I was just wondering, why not just pick an acre? And then that had a maximum density of fourteen townhouses?
Right, you could do that.
That's almost as big as my community, Wellington.
If you look at some, there's lots, if you drive around town, there are lots of examples of that one-acre development. Where you have a little L-shaped townhouse community. It tends to be ill-taken care of, because the HOA is not large enough or substantial enough to have any, um, ability to, to properly maintain it. I would say we have five or six of those around town, maybe more than that. But, you know, that's, that is, that you could do that. You could bring it down to an acre and, and that would be something.
It seemed like the sixty thousand dollars meets a, I mean, sixty thousand, sixty thousand square feet meets a theme here. So we flipped through the tables. All of the changes on the townhouses are going up to sixty thousand square feet.
All of them are the same, yeah.
So, I was just wondering, what's wrong with townhouses? What, 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 I mean, you know, I, I'm just, with, the, the purpose of the bill to fill in density on three areas that don't have density requirements now looks to me like, boom, let's go after townhouses require sixty thousand square feet. Townhouses is the entryway ownership home.
It is. I'm not, I'm not, uh, pushing for that. You guys could certainly do that.
Okay.
Visualize major's choice. Major's choice is R-two. You have somebody comes in and has an, an, uh, a desire to tear down an existing single-family and put up three townhouses in the middle of that, in the middle of that neighborhood. I, I don't know if that's, would be welcomed. So, um, that's where I was headed with that.
Okay.
To me.
It would not be welcomed.
They, they might have covenants to prevent that.
They might. Right, they might.
So, the, um... If I could, Jim, just on, while we're on this townhouse issue.
Yeah, yeah, certainly.
There surely must be a, because I, my math, and correct me if I'm wrong, someone would need to develop thirty-four townhouse units. That's the minimum. That for a new townhouse development, you'd have to have thirty-four units for this math to work out.
If you're, yeah, if you get the perfect, you know, square-shaped lot that, uh, has the right, uh, and there's maximum efficiency, yes.
Right, so, I, um, I share your concern about someone plopping three townhouses in the middle of major's choice, certainly. But I also share Commissioner Rutledge's concern about, where are you gonna find a spot to put up thirty-four townhouses in the, in the town of Bel Air? In what essentially amount, I mean, maybe, maybe. But this, I, I think this would have a, a really severe chilling effect on the building of townhomes, which are the entry level, you know? And, and I'm certainly trying to encourage more homeownership, especially people of my generation. We want more opportunities for homeownership, because that's where you create wealth, and I'm just opining here. But that's where you create wealth, as opposed to, say, apartment rental, where that's the opposite of creating wealth. And so, I, I would worry about a number quite as high as sixty thousand. Uh, so that's something that we can talk about and work on, certainly. So I, I appreciate that conversation.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner Taylor. It, it might, so the next... It, it might, so the next one, um, which is a change in the R3, which is not one of the targeted, um, you know, it, R3 has current density, and the purpose is to fill in density where none exists. But there's still another change in the R3 on semi-detached dwelling. And see if I have this correct. A semi-detached dwelling is two independent households with a common wall that runs from the dirt to the roof.
Yes, on separate lots.
Right. Okay, on, on, on its own lot, but, okay, but then, then the lot line is the common wall.
A two-family dwelling has two dwellings that have a common wall on the same lot.
I'm talking with semi-det, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, a semi-detached has the same thing, basically, but they're on two separate lots.
Oh, I thought the two-family dwelling was an over-under, and the semi-detached was a side-by-side.
I don't believe so.
No, I was looking at that definition earlier. But I, I'm probably wrong, you're the expert, but, but...
I can double-check for you.
So, on the semi-detached dwelling, I noticed the change went minimum lot area of 10,000 square feet, and that's per unit, or for both of the houses in the semi-detached?
I believe that was for both, but I, I, right now, I don't have...
But it went from 14 to 10?
Right, we were looking at that in terms...
14, maximum density per acre, down to 10. Why the four-digit reduction? Or close to 40% reduction?
The idea there is that a semi-detached and a two-family dwelling are basically the same. So, um, the need, the, the density really shouldn't be that much of a difference between the two.
Okay. And you can check that, that, that definition, because I, I was wrestling with that, and I looked that up this afternoon at about 4:00, and I was like, hey, what is the definition?
Well, I'm going from memory, so...
And I, and I was like, wow, because I was trying to figure out where the over-under was, because I was thinking of things like, you know, Dr. Ryer's office, et cetera, you know, I mean, historically, the Gatz Law, you know, you know, um, Streets, uh, Tim Street's, you know, office, you know, there, there were, there was historically a lot of people where there was combined, the, uh, the mom, pa lived upstairs, the store was downstairs type of a thing, so, I was just thinking, where's the over-under? And I found the over-under.
Yeah, yeah, I'm going from memory, so...
Okay, no problem.
I can certainly get back with you on that.
Which, which is, I, I guess, why this has kind of turned into a work session, rather than us having a work session. Um, but the reduction from 14 to 10, I just didn't quite follow the rationale why that density became more restrictive in R3.
Okay, I can respond to that if I had more information in front of me.
No problem, thank you. Um, and then in RO, um, which has density rules, again, the townhouse went to 60,000 square feet for the, for the lot size, and the semi-detached dwelling dropped from 14 to 10.
Correct.
And, um, any, wh, why the 14 to 10 in the RO?
Same reason.
Then, um, so then on the B1, B1 has density regulations, correct? It's the B2, B2A, and B3A that don't have density limits currently. So, B1 currently has them, but again, there's some material changes there.
Correct.
We talked about the 60,000 square foot on the townhouse. The semi-detached dwellings went from 14 to 10, and the multi-family dwelling went from a minimum 20,000 square feet up to 60,000, and the 60,000 was going to be required on the overall parcel. So, are there two changes going on there? The 20,000 was what the lot size was for what? The building?
For the property. So, you're looking at...
So, we took the total prior from 20,000 square feet to 60?
Yes.
Tripled that?
Mm-hmm.
And can you share with us any rationale on that?
Basically, the same reason that we're doing that for, uh, proposing that for the townhouses, so that you have something that's, uh, you're not, again, somebody could have a, a half-acre lot and put a, in an apartment building on it. And, um, we're trying to avoid that kind of development, uh, the, so that was why it was added there. There's no, uh, relationship to, or there's no stars there, because all apartments are one lot.
So, the, um, the B1 doesn't have the same rationale on the townhouses as, say, the Rs, like your, your example, major's choice. It's not like any concern there of all of a sudden, what was just a single-family dwelling?
Less of a concern, correct.
Yeah. But no matter what we do, Governor Moore's bill would override if they met the criteria.
Yes. Right now, our densities are relatively high.
Okay, so...
Compared to our neighbors, anyway.
The, um, on B2, there were changes there? We're just completely eliminating the setbacks, is that right, in B2?
Well, there were only two setbacks. One was for accessory buildings, and the other one was for other permitted uses.
Okay.
And that's just a reference back to the, to the overall zoning, uh, requirements. They're still there, we're not eliminating them. They're just not being referred to by the, the permitted use tables.
And they didn't have any density restrictions in that, now they're being added in B2? Is that correct?
Yes.
So, on the multi-family dwelling, um, why is there no minimum lot area?
Because there's, the, the thought there is that there is going to be a lot more smaller lot development, and that can be, uh, integrated in with the B2 existing development without it being a disruptive element.
Okay.
You have, you can have, you, you look at all the, this is basically Main Street. So, somebody wanted to do a, a multi-family development on Main Street, they could do so without having set the, the restrictions of that minimum lot size.
And then, B2A, s- similar thing that ju, that, that is, is just pretty, but it's getting, the, the B2As jumping from a minimum lot size, so, let me just back up. On the townhouse in the B2, you're leaving that at the 1,800 square feet. The 60,000 square feet doesn't interplay. There's no change on those minimum lot area sizes in B2, but in B3, there's a townhouse and a multi-family dwelling, which you refer to as apartments, that could be condominiums, correct?
You're going to B3 now?
Yeah, B, no, B2A.
B2A. What was the question?
A multi-family dwelling could be not just apartments, it could be condominiums that people buy, correct?
Yes.
The code doesn't make any distinction.
Right, I mean, uh, apartments are always going to be one lot.
Yeah.
There's not going to be separate lots within that.
And, and, and what gets built as a multi-family dwelling could be sold individually as a condo regime?
Yes.
Or rented out as apartments, is that correct?
Right.
So, um, the B2A then adds a 60,000 minimum lot size to build any kind of multi-family dwelling, whether they're apartments or condos. But there's a limit of 20 per acre, is that correct? 20 units per acre?
Correct.
And the, is there like, you're keying on some precedent for that? Or is that like tying into the B3? On the 20?
On the 20 units per acre?
On the density?
Yeah, it, uh, across the board, you're now looking at 20 units per acre.
Yeah.
Per multi-family.
The, um, so, um, would that change, um, have any adverse effect on any projects that have already been approved by the Planning Commission?
In the B2A?
Yes.
Yes.
Which project?
Hickory Flats.
Hickory Flats wouldn't qualify under this?
Hickory Flats would have a, a density in excess of 20 units per acre.
Okay.
Now, there is an exemption for projects who've received their approval, correct?
If that exemption stays in there, then it would not affect them, okay.
So, is, the, the bill as introduced for reception tonight has a carve-out for Hickory Flats, correct?
I, I'm not...
But it has a carve-out for any project that's been approved?
Okay, yes. That would be, it would exempt Hickory Flats from the application of this development.
This would be something moving forward.
Yeah, mm-hmm. I didn't understand your question.
And that's the bill you support, that, as, as staff. As staff, you support, don't mess with what's already been approved by the Planning Commission, and have the language...
That's what we wrote into the, to the ordinance, whether or not that moves forward, it's the, up to the town board.
Okay. But as, as the professional staff member, do you have an opinion one way or another on that?
You should take that in a closed session.
Oh, I just, I just, he, he made a recommendation.
I know, I just...
I'm not asking for a confidential consultation.
I know.
I know you're asking for one.
I, yeah.
Okay, all right. So, uh, maybe I should ask Mr. Chismar, do you intend to keep that exemption in or strip it out?
Um, for both bills, my intention would be to strip it out.
All right.
Because it would provide non-conforming uses, situations. And maybe some other changes that I would recommend that we need to discuss, like, I'm not sure, B2 should have density requirements. We need to take a look at that, because it would also generate some non-conforming use.
It was actually going to be my, one of my questions, I don't want to interrupt, Commissioner Chis, excuse me, Commissioner Rutledge's line of questions, because he's actually asking a lot of the questions I had to ask, but, um, do we know how, how many non-conforming uses these changes would make, if any?
Not completely.
Okay.
I went through, I went through, and this legislation got put together rather quickly.
Sure.
And, um, I didn't have time to be able to go through and look to see what it affects. I did a...
I completely understand.
I did a kind of fishing expedition on some of the areas around, in and around downtown, and found that several would become non-conforming.
Okay, so, it's a, it's a non-zero problem.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, I, I understand. I, as, as someone who's been with the town for some time, I thought you might have a, a gut idea of, hey, I've seen some things that have been approved that wouldn't meet this, you know, these parameters, so I, I appreciate your...
This is an old town, as we just went through and talked about.
150 years, as a matter of fact.
So, there's a lot of things in town that are non-conforming.
Sure, and, yeah, and I, I respect that as well. Um, there are many things that have been non-conforming for, for decades, so, certainly.
Right, but I think most of the ones that, we, we talked about it today, that Kevin looked at, there were, most of them were in the B2.
Most of them are in the B2.
And, and that's why we need to take a look at B2.
Okay.
And I think that's a reasonable thought.
Because we don't, we don't want to get into too many like that, and try to minimize, in my, in my estimation, in my opinion.
Absolutely, I, I think that's reasonable.
So, Kevin, then on B3A, that was the same thing, is that, is that tracking pretty close to the...
It's pretty much following the same density restriction.
60,000 townhouse, 60,000 square feet to, um, building, to build apartments, um, the density of 20. Would, um, this legislation, if it did, um, impact any projects that have been approved by the Planning Commission in, in B3A that haven't been built yet?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay, so, standard-on bond will not be affected by this?
Standard-on bond's mixed use.
Okay. And would they be affected by the change in the definition of mixed use?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Director Small, one of the things I noticed is that in certain instances of the code, multi-family dwelling makes reference to different stories, uh, whereas in some of the inserted instances, it does not here. Uh, and I was curious if you could provide some insight on that?
We tried to get rid of stories in every, where we could find them, but there are some places where the stories are somewhat descriptive. So, yeah, if you can show those to me, I'd be glad to look at them.
Sure, so, for instance, in B3 would be an example of one-and-a-half stories, two-and-a-half stories, three stories, four stories?
Right, so those, um, the reason those stayed in there is that when the, the form-based codes came through, they were, did not affect B3. And I, I can only assume that people looked at B3 as basically the Route 24. And, um, that being outside of the traditional area of the town, that they thought that it didn't need to have a lot of the architectural and design protections that the form-based codes offer. And so, they, they regulated it as a more of a traditional zoning category. So, therefore, they, the one-and-a-half, two-and-a-half was applied.
Okay. But so this, you know, the new, the new density, just to be clear, and I'm fairly certain it doesn't, this would not have any impact on the height or stories that you could put in B3A or anywhere else?
No.
Okay, yeah. I, I figured as much, I was just curious about why some of the charts had made reference to stories, uh, and, and why some didn't.
Right, some of the, in some of these places, we're having to refer back.
Right.
Because that's where all of the regulation occurs.
So, I, I, I noticed that, and so, in, in B2 and in, in, uh, not in B2A, actually, um, in B3A, um, there are references to the code as opposed to numbers, which is, I'm get, I'm picking up that that's the calling card of the form used.
Yes.
Okay.
And it really should be in B2A, too, but it wasn't. I, I inherited that.
Okay, um, all right, I, I, I'm interested, this, perhaps this discussion is too broad for, for this moment here, and we should include on our work session a discussion of the virtue of form used versus Euclidean. The town in Ohio was actually named after the mathematician, so in a weird way, it all links back together. But I'm interested in hearing more about the difference here between form used and otherwise, because it does seem to me as though there are some things that are somewhat disjointed, uh, in, in how we treat them.
Yeah, this, the way this zoning change occurred, it was kind of partial. And it should have been, looking back, having a, you know, hindsight, I think it probably should have been everything.
Okay. Yeah. I, I certainly have more, more to ask and more to say, but I'll, I'll hold off for now, since I think we'll, we're erring on the side of giving this some time, so.
Agreed. I, I just feel like we need to have more time, we need another, we need an actual work session on this. And, and give economic development the opportunity to look over what we're talking about and have input. I mean, I, I just feel like this room would have more people speaking to this if we did this correctly. And I don't feel comfortable with this, as it is tonight.
Well, again, um, I think there are some, some good changes here. There are some changes that I think we need to work on, and we've talked about those particularly as it relates to townhomes, but I think that this is a, this is a good conversation that we need to have, and it introduced me to the whole topic of form-based zoning, which I should have known existed, but really didn't grasp what it was, so I really appreciate that, and, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna take the next month to dive into that. Um, with that being said, I'm glad we had this conversation tonight to, to open up on these issues, um, but I, I will make a motion to, uh, table the motion to receive ordinance 838-24.
I second that. All right. Uh, I think we have a member of the public here who would like to make a public comment, that's okay. Ms. Lucas, it is time.
Peg Lucas, 516 Robinson Street, Bel Air. I'll be very brief, it sounds like the same argument I would give before, this is very quickly brought before us, um, it was not on your worksheet, um, work agenda. It appears to me to be an attempt to prevent certain projects from going through, projects that have been approved through the process to a certain point, have been addressed by the Planning Commission and a number of other entities, um, and I'm disappointed to see that this would happen. So, please do give it some more thought, get the other, uh, uh, commissions involved so that more thought can be brought to the process. I hope you got the idea of what I'm trying to say. Please don't try to introduce something immediately to change what has been going on and what has been accepted. Be more careful in your thought process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lucas. Is anyone else here who wishes to make a public comment on this particular piece of legislation? Okay. In that case, Mr. Krantz, we are ready for the vote.
This will be for the vote to, pardon me, this will be for the vote to lay ordinance 838-24 on the table. Commissioner Rutledge?
Aye.
Commissioner Chismar?
Nay.
Nay.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Chance?
Aye.
Chair Edding?
Nay.
The motion to lay the vote on the table passes three to two.
Thank you, Mr. Krantz. Next on our agenda is Resolution twelve forty-three dash twenty-four, request approval of Complete Streets Leadership Academy, the CSLA improvements, do I have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that Resolution number twelve forty-three dash twenty-four requesting Maryland Department of Transportation close the left turn from southbound Main Street to eastbound Gordon Street in Bel Air by the board. Is that be accepted by the Board of Town Commissioners? We're missing the verbiage there.
I think we are.
Would that be be accepted, okay. I move that the resolution be accepted, approved, I move that the resolution be approved by the Board of Town Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Taylor, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Chance, and this would be Mr. Small.
In the spring of two thousand twenty-four, Smart Growth America, the Maryland Department of Transportation and the town of Bel Air partnered to implement, and they also, we also, something I did not mention there, we partnered with Howard County and the city of Hagerstown, partnered to implement temporary improvements to the intersection of Gordon Street and Main and Bond Streets. This partnership was coordinated through Complete Streets Leadership Academy, lots of acronyms in this. Designed, which is designed to promote safe pedestrian and bicycle movement and reduce vehicle conflicts. A series of work sessions took place over several months to produce recommendations for improvement. The demonstration project was initiated, temporary improvements at that intersection including changes in pavement markings, signage, and flex post placement. Speed reduction devices were also placed on the approaches to the intersection. In addition to the left, the left turn from southbound Main Street onto eastbound Gordon was closed to reduce confusion and simplify the number of vehicle movements. Most of the temporary improvements have been removed, and I would thought by now when I would be talking here that other speed cushion would be gone, but I cannot seem to get a hold of anybody at the state highway. So anyway, again, with the exception of the flex posts that are closing the left turn lane. The public response to the temporary closure of the left turn indicates the need for this movement is not a priority for proper and efficient traffic movement in the area, and the benefits of reducing conflicts and creating a safe and convenient pedestrian-friendly intersection would be supported by removal of the left turn lane and replacement with a landscaped median. Now, I cannot say whether that would be a landscaped median, it's up to the state highway, it's their right of way. Staff recommends Resolution twelve forty-three dash twenty-four, request an MDOT, close the left turn to East Gordon from North Main Street be approved by the Board of Town Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Small, I just wanted to point out to the board that the resolution that initially came out had a code section four fifty-eight, which was not the correct code section, that allows the Chief of Police or the Director of Public Works to close a street temporarily. So that has been amended to reflect the charter section that gives. I don't know if that went out to everyone, or it did, okay, great, I just want to make sure that everybody had noted that, it was just a technical correction.
And the updated version is on the website as well. Yes, yes, yeah, Mr. Krantz, I know he sent that to our email, and Mr. Krantz, being the dutiful town clerk he is, I knew he wouldn't have sent that to us if he hadn't put it on the website, so it's certainly all out there.
I knew that Mr. Krantz and I had that conversation, but I wasn't sure that the email had gotten around to everybody, and I just want to make sure that everybody was aware of that, so at any rate, any questions for Mr. Small?
No questions, I just want to say I think that this is, it's not common that the town board makes changes to traffic patterns in town, it's certainly my first time casting such a vote, but I think that this is a good change, and that this will make that intersection significantly safer at really minimal impact to the motorist.
It is an odd thing for the town board to do, only because what you're doing is requesting state highway to do something, and they asked me for that, otherwise we would have sent a letter signed by the mayor.
Oh, there you go, so I think it's a great idea, it is terribly confusing location for cars and pedestrians, and if they should meet there, it would be not a good situation, and we have a lot of people going back and forth to school there, and it's a great idea to correct it, and we really got no negative feedback from those changes, other than the.
Traffic calming.
Other than those.
So the cones type things will stay up there, but are permanent?
There are.
We have no idea.
There are flex posts that are up there, they're closing that left turn lane. If we get a snow, it's most likely that the snow plows will go right over them, but we'll see whether they survive the winter. If we have a winter like we've had the last two years, we probably don't have to worry about it.
That's true.
But this request goes into the state, and the state could take, who knows, right.
It could take a while, now, it's not that expensive, so it could be something that gets put on what they call like a district-wide improvement, and so that would be something that would be rather quicker than usual.
Than usual, okay. But if we, snow plows do wipe out the flex posts, we can't put them back, we got to ask the state to put them back, or?
No, we can, one of the things that happened through this whole experiment is we got about eleven thousand five hundred dollars worth of stuff from Smart Growth America, flex posts, all of the speed cushions, so we can use those and put those back up, we just need to get permission from the state highway or have them do it.
Our hope, state highways took an active interest in this project from the get-go, so our hope is that that will can follow through and they will make this a complete project, so unlike other projects, it may take longer. We're hoping this might move a little quicker because of that reason.
Right, our cheerleader on this with the state highway has been promoted, so.
Excellent.
Good for, good for him, not as much for us.
Well, you know, it may, I don't know if this is an indictment or an endorsement of government, but it often really does boil down to, is the person that knows you and knows your project in a position to do anything about it?
Right.
And so when your guy gets a jump ahead, that is really good news, so I'm very glad to hear that.
I think it's an attractive project because it does do such a great thing for a very little amount of money. I mean, it's not that big of a deal in the state highway's budget, so I'm crossing my fingers and I'll be optimistic that they'll take care of it.
This spring will probably identify another intersection to try to improve and identify a grant that will help us do that.
I like the grant identification.
Yep.
All right, anything else? All right, Mr. Krantz?
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the, this is for the vote for the approval of Resolution twelve forty-three dash twenty-four. Commissioner Rutledge?
Aye.
Commissioner Chismar?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Chance?
Aye.
And Chair Edding?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the Thomas Street Phase Three Complete George Street Project Contract, do I have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that the proposal of Ivy Hill Nursery Co., Inc., thirteen oh five C Enterprise Court, Bel Air, Maryland, to provide all labor, material, equipment, and supervision to construct Phase Three of the Thomas Street Road Improvements Project in accordance with all contract specifications and plans in the amount of two hundred fifteen thousand seven hundred fifty dollars be accepted by the Board of Town Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Rutledge, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Taylor, and this would be Mr. Klein.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Several years ago, the Economic and Community Development Commission identified Thomas and George Streets in the Howard Park neighborhood as key areas for revitalization within the town. The initiative aimed to enhance the streetscape, fostering stronger connections between neighborhoods and commercial areas. This effort involved multiple public meetings and the development of conceptual designs, ultimately leading to plans for significant enhancements to both Thomas and George Streets. As you know, we've already started on Thomas Street's improvement, and the project is moving along fairly well. This project will concentrate on George Street. The project will be financed through funding provided by the American Rescue Plan Act. This project includes the installation of new curbs and gutters on both sides of George Street, ADA compliant handicap ramps at the intersections, a sidewalk along the south side street, and the milling and resurfacing of George Street from South Kelly to Atwood Road. Commissioner Chismar, I just wanted to let you know that there is room for parking on this job. The road section in, between Kelly and Atwood is thirty-two feet, which gives two eleven and a half foot drive lanes and eight foot parking area on the south side of the street.
Okay, good.
So you had asked that at the work session, I just wanted to follow up with that.
Just wanted to make sure we weren't taking away all parking over there, it's a good project, but yeah.
So it is indeed a part of the project.
Great.
Staff recommends that the Board of Town Commissioners approve the proposal from Ivy Hill Nursery Company to provide all labor, materials, equipment, and supervision for the construction of Phase Three of the Thomas Street Road Improvement Projects. The work will be completed in accordance with the contract specification and plans for a total cost of two hundred and fifteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Any questions for Mr. Klein?
No.
All right, I had noticed that there was a big, big price differential between these bids, so it's a great number from Ivy Hill.
Yes, Madam Chair, there was quite a bit of concern regarding that we, I spent many hours talking with the contractor, Ivy Hill, and questioned if they felt that their bid was in line and they could do the project properly, and they've informed me with one hundred percent certainty that they have good numbers and were going to be able to do the job correctly for us.
I have every confidence they will, I know their name even I recognize, so great that you got such a great price on it.
Yeah.
All right, any further questions for Mr. Klein? Any member of the public wish to make a comment on this contract? I didn't think so.
It's a good one.
It's a good one, all right, Mr. Krantz?
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the approval of the award of contract for the Thomas Street Revitalization Improvements, Phase Three. Commissioner Rutledge?
Aye.
Commissioner Chismar?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Chance?
Aye.
And Chair Edding?
Aye.
The contract is approved, thank you.
All right, next we have the reappointment to the Cultural Arts Commission, do I have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I recommend that the appointment of Margaret S. Lucas to the Bel Air Cultural Arts Commission for a term of three years, effective immediately, be approved by the Bel Air Board of Town Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Chance, do I have a second?
I second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Taylor, any comments from the board, questions? Any member of the public wish to make a comment on this appointment?
Peg, you're doing a great job.
You're doing a great job, we're so happy that you're still here helping.
Thank you so much, thank you, Paige, I mean Paige, Peg, thank you very, very much for your service, thank you.
All right, we're ready.
The appointment of Peg Lucas to the Cultural Arts Commission, Commissioner Rutledge?
Aye.
Commissioner Chismar?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Chance?
Aye.
And Chair Edding?
Aye.
You're back on the commissions, thank you, Peg.
All right, next up, we have the appointment to the Board of Appeals, do I have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that the appointment of Lisa Spar to the Bel Air Board of Appeals for a term of three years, effective immediately, be approved by the Bel Air Board of Town Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Rutledge, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Chance, any comments from the board?
I was very impressed by Ms. Spar's resume, I have met her in a few professional settings, not many times, but I think that she will provide both very beneficial perspective to the Board of Appeals, certainly a level head, and also a wealth of industry knowledge that will serve the board well. I think this is an excellent addition to the Board of Appeals, that is a board that exercises great statutory authority. Perhaps more statutory, more statutory authority than any other board or commission, you might say. They're in a tight competition with the Planning Commission, but no doubt, a seat on the Board of Appeals is a weighty one, and so I think that we will be well-served by Ms. Spar.
Terrific, I thank her for her willingness to step up and serve, anything else from the board?
Well said, Commissioner Taylor.
Any member of the public that wishes to make a comment on this appointment? All right, seeing no one, we're ready for a vote.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the vote to appoint Lisa Spar to the Board of Appeals, Commissioner Rutledge?
Aye.
Commissioner Chismar?
abstain.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Chance?
Aye.
And Chair Edding?
Aye.
The motion is passed, thank you.
All right, next we have the appointment to the Board of Appeals as an alternate of Gregory Adolf, do I have a motion?
One comment on that, Madam Chair, is it an appointment, wasn't there some issue with this about?
There was.
Was that resolved, I remember last time?
That has been resolved, the last time we looked at this, the town code and the state law, neither one specifies that an alternate serves a term of three years. However, Ms. Thompson has pointed out to me an Attorney General's opinion that concludes that the alternate does actually serve a term, and there being no other case law opinions or anything, any other developments that we could find, we are going to continue to name the alternate for a term of three years.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that was still the case, there was some controversy before and I couldn't remember if it was.
A question, and Ms. Thompson has brought the light, shown the light on that one.
Okay, tripped over it, all right, so then with that, I move that the appointment of Gregory Adolf to the Bel Air Board of Appeals as an alternate for a term of three years, effective immediately, be approved by the Bel Air Board of Town Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Chismar, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Rutledge, any discussion or questions?
No, I think Greg will make a good alternate, he's been on the committee, he's been on the board for many terms. I know he has some personal commitments, which is why he stepped down, but he graciously said that he would serve as an alternate, and I think that's a good thing.
I agree, I mean, he's already got the experience, he'll be a terrific alternate because he's got those years behind him, his backstop. Any other comments from the board? Any comments from any member of the public on this appointment? All right, Mr. Krantz, we're ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the appointment of Greg Egadoff to the Board of Appeals as an alternate, Commissioner Rutledge?
Aye.
Commissioner Chismar?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Chance?
Aye.
And Chair Edding?
Aye.
Motion is approved, thank you.
All right, public announcements, all town of Bel Air offices will be closed on Wednesday, December twenty-fifth, and Thursday, December twenty-sixth, in observance of the Christmas holidays. All residential recycling will be picked up on Friday, December twenty-seventh. There will be no collection of bulk trash on Wednesday and no pickup of loose leaf and yard waste Wednesday and Thursday. Trash, however, will be collected on the usual schedule, correct, Mr. Klein?
I couldn't have said it better myself, ma'am, I had it written right here on my phone if it wasn't brought up, and you're exactly right on.
That's important.
And I just want to add, if anyone has any further questions about it, they can definitely call down to Public Works, we'll be happy to assist them.
They're always very happy to answer questions down there, whatever I've called, but that's the important thing, your trash will be picked up on its regular collection schedule, so.
Yes, and we're going to, we're going to try to continue to put that out into the community just to make sure that everyone gets the notice, and when people are calling in for bulk trash now, we're also letting everyone know the new schedule for next week.
That's a real public service because the number one question I see floating around on social media is, is what's my trash pickup?
It's definitely Monday and Tuesday.
All righty, the final Bel Air Holiday Market of two thousand twenty-four, hosted by the Bel Air Downtown Alliance, is scheduled for nine AM to noon on Saturday, December twenty-first, in the parking lot at one twenty-one South Main Street, next to Dust Beer Hall. The Bel Air Farmers Market wraps up its two thousand twenty-four season on Saturday, December twenty-first. The market will be open from nine AM to eleven AM in the Mary Ristow Office Building Parking Lot at Two South Bond, also, which is also at the intersection of South Bond and Thomas Street. On January first, town offices will be closed for the holiday. On January second, the Planning Commission will meet at Town Hall at six o'clock. On January the eighth, the Tree Committee will meet at four thirty PM in the Planning Department. And on, in the new year, the Starving Artist Art Show and Sale is scheduled for Sunday, January the fifth, two thousand twenty-five, in the Hartford Artist Gallery in Army Marketplace. This exhibit will run through March the second. The gallery is open from ten AM to six PM, Wednesday through Friday, and ten AM to four PM on the weekends. One, let's see, a reminder that the Town of Bel Air Municipal Citizens Academy will begin on January the twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five, with a graduation on March the seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five. This free seven-week program is an opportunity for Bel Air residents to learn about municipal government and includes presentations on all aspects of how the Town of Bel Air serves its residents. Call four one oh six three eight four five five four, or visit the town website for additional information and to register. The next Town Hall meeting is scheduled for Monday, January the sixth, it has been canceled. The Board of Town Commissioners will hold a work session on Tuesday, January the fourteenth, followed by a Town Hall meeting on Tuesday, January the twenty-first. Any additions or corrections?
There will be a Hartford's Harvest Winter Market that will be.
There will be a Hartford's Harvest Winter Market that will be in January, February, and March, on the second and fourth Saturdays of the month. We're still working out the final arrangements for that, and same place that the Farmers Market has.
Terrific, all right.
Madam Chair, sorry, in case our viewing audience missed it, just to reiterate that January the fourteenth will be a combination Town Hall meeting for one agenda item, and the rest will be the work session.
Right, and the Town Hall meeting will be on the property purchase?
Yes, that's correct, ma'am.
Right. Anything else?
I'd just like to add that the Municipal Citizens Academy website is in process of being posted, so we don't have it live yet, and we're also going to have an online form for Town Minister Hopkins, correct me if I'm wrong, twenty, first come, first served participants, so once it does go live, we will share that on our newsflash and social media to get the word out.
All right, twenty spots.
Hope to have it later this week.
Great, I'm sure everybody's still busy with that Christmas bearing down hard on us, and we'll be looking at that after the new year. All right, anything further for the public announcements? No? In that case, we are at public comments, is there anyone here who wishes to make a public comment on any topic, whether it was on this evening's agenda or not? No? All right, in that case, commissioners' comments?
Madam Chair, if I could just, I wanted to thank Director Small for enduring our, my questions this evening, and your frank answers, and your expertise is always very much appreciated, you know, and I want the, the, all the staff to know how much I appreciate their time, their effort, your expertise, your patience with us, very much, and that I wish you all a very Merry Christmas.
Well, you beat me to it in thanking our wonderful staff, Commissioner Rutledge, but I also wanted to thank my colleagues on the board, specifically Commissioner, Commissioner Chismar for putting forward this legislation and, and beginning an important conversation, and also for my other colleagues for engaging with it in what I think is going to be a really, a really critical conversation in how we want the Bel Air of the twenty-first century to look and feel and, and be as a vibrant community. I know that whenever any one of us comes to this board with policy proposals, they do so because they believe it's in the best interest of the town, and they do so in the best of faith, and, you know, without any intention to, to have anything other than a, than a great conversation about how we can move the Town of Bel forward, Bel Air forward. So I'm really looking forward to that conversation, but before then, I, I hope that we all are looking forward to an excellent Christmas season, and some well-deserved rest, especially for, for our town staff that has put in countless hours this year to help implement the vision of this board. I think we've made some really, really good progress this year, we've accomplished some wonderful things, and I'm really looking forward to what two thousand twenty-five brings.
So we start the second, the next one hundred and fifty years.
That's right.
It may seem like this meeting lasted a hundred and fifty years, and for that, we apologize, but enjoy the break that we have from now until our next meeting, which will be next year, so, thank you so much, and Merry Christmas to everybody.
I, I too want to say Merry Christmas to all of you, and I really do appreciate every single one of you and how hard you work every day, that, you know, we, we sit up here and talk about what we need to discuss, but only because you've put in so much time and energy across the board, I, I thank you each, it's just remarkable, all the, the time and energy that you put into your jobs, and, and don't think that it goes unnoticed, so thank you. Merry Christmas.
Well said, Commissioner Chance.
Merry Christmas, and I hope you have a white Christmas, right, Mr. Klein? You're looking forward to it, is that, no?
I'm just gonna have to get down and play with my snow machines, they're probably not.
Okay, all right. Make your own snow.
A white Christmas would guarantee we'd get rid of those speed humps on Main Street.
That's right, that's right, those blades are.
They're not plow-worthy.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.